Okay, we'd like to welcome on everyone out this evening to our Spanish Fork Planning Commission meeting. It's good to see some people here. It's always nice to have you here. Tonight, we'd like to acknowledge that we have two commissioners that aren't here, Commissioner Ernst and Commissioner Mitchell. We're going to start this evening with a pledge of allegiance and we'll have Commissioner Warnock lead us in the pledge.
Please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start this evening with approval of the minutes from our last meeting in January.
I move to approve the January 22nd, 2025 Planning Commission minutes.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Our first item of business tonight is a zone change and preliminary plat. It will be a public hearing and we will go through this as we usually do. So who is going to be a member of staff that's going to give us the heads up on this?
Okay, so what you have before you is the Condor Heights preliminary plat and rezone on this triangular piece of property on the east side of the city adjacent to the railroad track there. It's about 4.2 acres in size and what's being proposed, if you can go to the next slide, you can see it's currently the rural residential zoning designation with the land use, future land use being estate residential. So because of that, they are proposing a five lot subdivision with lots that meet the minimum lot size for the R-115 zone. Also meets the width requirements where we come into some issues because of the shape of the property is the lot on the north end that's triangular in shape does not meet the minimum depth requirement in the R-115 zone. There's also an existing house there on the south end that with the dedication for the necessary right of way would not be able to meet the front setback for the R-115 zone. You can see there's also railroad dedication here that's necessary. That's part of the plans to expand that with the developments that run along that corridor. So with this, because it's under the five acre requirement for master plan development, which would be the typical tool used by the city to address some of the difficulties with developing this lot, we've consulted with legal and come up with the option to do a development agreement to allow some of those adjustments to be made specifically for this development so that it can be built out and meet the plans for the future land So I believe you've been given a draft of that agreement. If you have a chance to look it over and have any questions about that or any other aspects of this, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
What size is this, is the entire project? It's less than five acres, how much less?
It's, I think it's about 4.2 acres.
I have one question. We have the right of way, I guess, for the railroad and the right of way for the road that has been on the west side of this project. Is the road on the west side going to remain a city road?
So currently that's in the county, the other half.
Right.
But yeah, that would, that would be continued at some future date as far as the improvements on the other side.
And because it's there already, the city intends to keep that. I guess the ground on the west side of this will develop at some point in time and then that will be determined. I guess the size and the type of road that is there will be determined then, is that right?
Yeah, the right of way that's shown on here would be half of what would be necessary.
So, okay, so that's already taken into consideration.
Yeah, and there is also a temporary turnaround that would be located here. They're showing a detention pond on this lot as well. They're still in talks with our engineering department to see if that can be shifted to the park strip.
I should have asked this question before the meeting because I thought it and forgot to follow up, but the, seems like when they were, when the city council was talking about the railroad closing the crossing that's at the end of that road, that there will, it's in the city road plan for that road to connect over to First South, or First Nor, First South. Is that, does it, is there a way to see where that, where the plan is for that to go?
Yeah, there's, it's on our master plan. We don't have like an exact, this is just kind of a line showing that we need the road, right? It doesn't necessarily have to go here. It could be shifted maybe this way a little or this way. There are improvements as far as utilities kind of end here, so there's still options of if we curb the road here, or kind of depends on this property owner whenever they develop of where that road will go exactly, but it just needs to make it back to First South and land at least 250 feet away from the railroad crossing, so.
Okay, so, and then with your arrow, draw where the, so that's the, where your arrow is, that's the tip of the triangle that we're talking about.
Yeah, right here.
Okay.
The property doesn't extend past where that road turned to the railroad tracks there, right?
Right.
This property ends.
This property does not, yeah.
Yes.
Right. I'll be really happy when that road goes through because I used to use that road all the time to cross over to Highway 89, so anyway, it'll make the access a lot nicer. But then, but then those property owners will back, be having more traffic again to go past their house, their properties.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. This is a, this is a public hearing and so we'll invite anyone from the public to come forward and talk about this project as it's been explained. So if there's anyone that would like to come up, come up and state your name so that we will have that in the record and let us know how you feel. George, come on up.
My name is Tom Schulte. I'm just curious as to how many lots they're proposing to put in there? Or is it just the five that were, like one, two, three, four, five?
Yes.
Five.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved. Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any questions for staff? Well, I neglected to ask, is the applicant here? Would you guys like to say something before we go any further?
Mark Hampton, they're representing the applicant. Do you have my address? Do you have addresses? No?
No.
Okay, Mark Hampton. So thank you. Just to answer your question, the property does, our property does extend over that road up to the tip, so we're taking that road that's been closed now, that's part of the new detention basin. Staff asked us if we can put a storm tech system in instead of a basin, we will, we will put that in and just so you know, we're anxious to help with the railroad. It's just over an acre that we've lost in the back which causes that shrinkage that we appreciate the development agreement that accommodates that for those lots, so thank you. Any questions I can answer about the project? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Commission over here, as you're doing your motion, if you'll just make sure you're reviewing and recommending that development agreement as part of the change, right, as part of the zone, sorry, as part of the subdivision.
Right. Right.
I think we reflect that in condition two, if that appears adequate to you.
Yes.
To the zone change.
I think that's how, that's how we noticed it.
Okay.
We did both. We kept it on both bases.
That's right.
Okay, I move that the, are we doing preliminary plat and zone change at the same time? Because that's what the, that's what the memo says here?
I think you'd probably be better to split them off.
So we do zone change first? Okay. I move that we recommend the zone change for the Condor Heights subdivision be recommended for approval based on the findings and subject to the conditions and including condition two with the accompanying development agreement. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we'll also, now we have split these up, is that right? So that was A. B is the Condor Heights subdivision and this will also be a public hearing. Do we need any further discussion? I think we covered it, didn't we? What we'd like to-
We didn't talk a lot about the zone change, but the zone change goes along with the general plan, so that's what's just implied and we're grateful the zone change and then, yeah.
Right.
Discussions, that was it.
Okay.
I think even we kind of take that for granted. All that we've seen in this area is proposals to change zoning to R-115 partly because we've felt like that was the only thing that the city council ultimately would likely support, so it's easy in that regard on the zoning. And just to be clear, for each of the kind of three different projects that are on your agenda tonight, for the zone change, a public hearing is required, but not for the preliminary part, excuse me, preliminary plat side of it or subdivision side of it.
I guess, I guess my only comment is on this, if we're going to have a comment about the preliminary plat, it's an existing home that's been there, great part of our community. I think it's definitely worth having the allowances in the development agreement also with the far north plot. The nice thing about that is, is it's a strange size, but it's a nice big lot, so definitely worth making those accommodations. And thank you for being willing to do the, is it easement, right of way?
Yeah, the city will be taking ownership of the property. The applicant will provide that.
So-
Very good.
Grateful.
Okay.
Okay.
We do need to have a public hearing on this as well, so I'd entertain a-
You just said no.
We're okay with, oh, that's right, it's preliminary plat. Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the proposed preliminary plat be recommended for approval based on included findings and conditions.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes. All right, thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is Zion's Landing Zone Change.
Okay. Not quite as tall as you, David. Happy Wednesday. So you guys have maybe seen this before, or a version of this, I should say. This property is located at 1495 East and 400 North and it contains just over two acres. The property is currently zoned agricultural with a general plan designation of medium density residential. The applicant has proposed a subdivision containing six single-family residential lots. To do this, the applicant has also requested a zone change to R-19 with the complete neighborhood overlay. The overlay in this case will be used to create a twin, a twin home, sorry, on lots 1A and 1B. The surrounding residential properties are a mix of R-19 to the west and north and R-112 to the south, so the R-19 kind of fits in here. In this, I included the old, which I think this is the old plat, so this one is the one that you guys looked at back in October. And then if you go to the next one, this is the updated plat, so they've gone from R-16 with eight lots down to R-19 with six lots, so they've reduced it by two lots there. The lots in this version range in size from just over 9,000 square feet to like 9,500 square feet roughly with about 85 feet of frontage each. Lots 1A and 1B, so the twin home, those are proposed to be about 7,500 square feet each with 70 feet of frontage. The old version, the R-161 back in October, the lot sizes were just over 6,000 square feet, so these are about 3,000 square feet larger. Once again, they're planning to stub that interior street to the east just in case any nearby property owners ever decide to develop. Some of the issues are with this are similar to the old version as well, access, utilities, improvements for that lot number five to make it buildable. And once again, since this is a zone change and preliminary plat, this will require two motions also, but the DRC did recommend approval of the proposal based off the findings and subject to the conditions. Any questions?
Any questions?
In the handouts, it's really microscopic. Can you point to which plot has the townhome?
Yeah, it's that, yeah, right there.
Okay, thank you.
1A, 1B.
Townhome or twin home?
Sorry, twin home. Twin home.
Twin home, thank you, twin home.
Any other discussion or questions for staff? Seeing none, this is a-
Zone change, so-
This is a zone change. Yep, so-
We do have the applicant present as well.
Would the applicant like to come forward at this time and talk to us about this?
Nate Heaps, represent the landowner as the applicant. Yeah, we just, we've gone through quite a few different options here and after our last round that ended back in October, we kind of sat down and sat down with staff and we did a, we did a work session with Planning Commission to try and figure out what a good option would be here. We do, we feel like we've complied with what was the largest amount of feedback from Planning Commission, City Council, and the public hearing was that it should be an R-19 zone and so this is complying with the R-19 zone. It was the idea with, as we talked with staff, to try and do the complete neighborhood overlay, which is a newer overlay that the city passed about a year last summer, I believe it was. And yeah, anyways, it's, that was kind of our take on it. We took some of the feedback that was given to us and this is what we came up with, so I don't know if there's any questions or anything for us.
I'm looking at your, I'm looking at page four and five and six at the conceptual renderings and it looks to me like you have two, I think the two conceptual renderings for the homes, the elevations look nice. I'm concerned about the elevations, design of the twin home?
Yeah, so it was our intent to match the existing renderings. We had not very much time with our architect to get, produce the best renderings that we could to match what we were doing, so this is a very simplified, dumbed-down version of the rendering that what you're seeing compared to the other, if you can flip back to the other two, they're much, they're much prettier. We just, we, to be fully transparent, we, between when we were on the agenda and today, we just, to get our architect to get something put together was not-
So the twin home will be more consistent with the single family?
Correct, yep. The twin home will be consistent with the single-family homes, yes.
Great.
Yep.
Great.
Generally, when we approve, well, I guess right now the zone change is what we're talking about, so in the next one we can-
So.
Okay.
The only other thing on that, this one was, we did have a rendering, but then in the code it talks about having garage doors not facing the street, so that's why this was quickly put together to show that they would not face the street. So, any other questions for me on this one?
I don't think so. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion before we, this is a public hearing, right?
Yes.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second to go into public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone from the public that would like to come and address this?
Gordon Smith and I represent the property owner to the east. I guess our only concern is the twin home. As it being, it's, all everything else is R-9, right? And that one's what, 7, 7,400 square feet per lot, so it's inconsistency and it's going to open up a bunch more townhomes being brought up into that area. I know consistently that's been supposed to be kind of a higher end 9,000, you know, 12,000 square foot lots, but now do we want to bring something, an island again into the same thing we talked about last time and having this one-off house next, or twin home next to our property as well? That's our biggest concern is that it, I don't feel it fits the environment, the area. There's not a townhome anywhere around there and now we're just going to bring a one-off and throw one into that, which is going to open up everything to the east. Next time they come there and say, well, you guys did it once here, let's open it up, but I don't know the scope of the plan from what I have here. Everything post that is supposed to be 9,000 or above east of our property, so that is our concern is the one-off townhome. We're fine with the nine, you know, R-9,000, but the townhome just doesn't fit that to me. It's showing on there that it's only 7,400 and it's not nine, so I don't understand how that fits into the, into the zoning of a 9,000 square foot lot when it isn't a 9,000 square foot lot. And how do we bend rules to do that? I mean, we're going from something big, went to six and we're kind of saying, yeah, we're fine with going with 9,000, but I just prefer everything stays consistent. We don't have inconsistencies through things like that.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no further comments in the public hearing, I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded to go out of public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The only item of discussion that we have here is about the twin home that is being proposed in this.
Well, and in this part, we're just talking about a zone change, so-
A zone change to R-19 with the-
That's right.
Yeah, so we can talk about the plat in the next part.
Is the complete neighborhood overlay part of the zone change? Yes.
Oh, it is.
That, okay.
So I guess that addresses that.
All right. And we will discuss that again.
So this motion includes the zone change with the complete neighborhood overlay, which is the twin home?
Right, yeah.
I, I think, I, I appreciate that we're doing, that we are going to the zoning that we, that we requested them to do to match, to match the neighborhood. The idea with the complete neighborhood overlay, I think that a complete neighborhood can have a, can have something like a twin home in it and it makes, I feel like it makes a more robust neighborhood actually. That's my opinion where you've got, you know, if I'm thinking about like if I were to buy, build a home in that and then my parents who are retired could, you know, live in one of the sides of a, of a twin home, then they're, they're right with me and you have more people in different generations and different parts of life living in a nice little That's kind of my thought about it.
I live in a neighborhood that has single-family homes and duplexes and it's been a great experience. It's nice to have some different options within just a few blocks and I've seen great designs with the twin homes that fit in nicely with single-family homes.
In the past few months, we've had discussion about how when there's a sprinkling of different things like this with an occasional twin home or something like that, it could actually help break the neighborhood up a little bit and of course, we wouldn't want a preponderance of a lot of, of non-conforming things. And we've seen a lot of examples now as we've looked at different subdivisions where there is an occasional duplex that is kind of a nice breakup of the neighborhood. Not to say that this is how we should go here, just saying that we have looked at this in the past. Any other discussion about that?
I'll be the odd guy out again because I like what they've done compared to what we had, but I think of the guys that are there expressing concern about they were already there and now that, you know, a twin home's coming in, I think that does make a big difference to the neighborhood. And I think some ways you're right, it could help and other ways it couldn't, so. I like to look at it, if that was my neighborhood, I would like to, to know before I go, so.
Right.
True.
Mr. Chairman?
Any discussion?
Do you mind?
You bet.
So I really appreciate the comments that everybody's made so far and this is new, so I want to be clear and acknowledge that this would be the first project that would have this particular approval with the zoning mechanism that would allow, in this case, for there to be a twin home constructed in a project that otherwise is single-family homes. Kind of a humble start and relatively small project, one twin home. It's the result of conversations that have gone on for quite some time and really it does kind of take us back in time a little bit to the way that projects routinely were approved in Spanish Fork 25 up until maybe about 15 years ago when we made some changes that made this impossible to do as part of a master plan development. And the intent with this particular zoning tool is to not change the char- is to not change the character of what really is intended to be a single family neighborhood by only allowing a very limited number of either two-home structures, twin home, maybe even three, with stipulations that the homes that get constructed still have different elements that make them look more like a single family home than your typical maybe twin home and that sort of a thing. Things that I think for a long time happened very well in neighborhoods in Spanish Fork. As we were talking a year ago about, about creating this mechanism, we showed some pictures of different streets in Spanish Fork and so forth, maybe what you're referring to, Michelle. Where again, this, this had been done and where things have aged well. And some of the motivation at least is to give people more opportunities, um, within the same geography to find a housing that for whatever reason meets a different desire or need. And from my perspective, probably the bigger motivation for the city in trying to encourage this kind of development, so, um, as staff today, we're proponents of it. When we meet with developers that want to do exclusively single family neighborhoods, we're asking them to consider this option, um, as really an alternative to, and I'm going to use an example that has a geographic connection to this. But just a little bit south and east of the subject property here, there's a project, um, called, uh, Maple Mountain. Uh, single family homes that go all the way to the south side of four hundred north. Uh, it's all the same project, uh, down to the south, including what's the Sierra Bonita Park and the elementary school and the townhomes on the south side of First South. Where in that case, um, as a master plan development that all was approved and developed as one project, we had the density very much so isolated from the single family part of the project, consolidated in one area, um, really a pretty distinct kind of, uh, separation there. For better or worse, uh, the effort is to try to get away from that type of an arrangement. And instead to take a more gentle approach with including density in the community. And for me, it's not even density, it's just different housing types and options. I could go on and on and on. We've talked about the concept of the missing middle, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And ways to make it so that single family neighborhoods age better over time, which does frankly oftentimes include having different housing options included in the neighborhoods. I'm not, I'm not saying this to necessarily try to be persuasive, but rather to kind of try to describe a little bit more of the reasoning behind what makes this today allowable with the city council's approval. Again, recognizing that this is the first one of these projects that's gotten this far. And then lastly, I want to stress the idea that I think this is only successful if there really is particular attention paid to how the non-single family structures look. And I think we're going to talk more about how to maybe manage that as you progress from step to step here. But, um, again, the idea is that, you know, it, uh, the inclusion of non-single family structures doesn't change the, the general atmosphere of a streetscape or a neighborhood or that type of a thing. So thanks for letting me throw that out there.
I agree. I, I think it's really, I, it's really important to have, i- if you're going to put a twin home in this, you've really got to have it be really nice, beautiful elevations, a great design. And I'm not impressed with the design that was given us, but I know that you're still working on that development. I don't love the roof line, uh, and just anyway, it can, it can be really great quality. I have, um, twin home condos that are, uh, just right around the corner from me that are beautiful, have aged well and in our neighborhood. And so, um, important to, I think the design is important.
I know we've, we've talked about the concept a lot about putting them in between. I think if this is a big project where you have a bunch of them, but it's just sandwiched in between two big lots of big homes, so I, to me, I just see a difference, but I get it.
I think one thing that, uh, we'd have to go along with something like this is the understanding for the other neighbors in this divi- subdivision that there is one lot that will be a duplex or a, or a twin home. Uh, so that you know that, uh, that is part of that development. This one is a little bit, uh, distinct in that, uh, these lots are all together, whether the road develops, uh, back to the east there on that lot or not. We assume that it will, but we don't know for sure. And with the cul-de-sac there, you know, that, that kind of separates it from the rest of the, of the area. And I am very aware of, um, there have been other requests, uh, up on East Bench about these kinds of things, but generally speaking, they were asking for multiple, multiple dwellings. In other words, they wanted, uh, either all twin homes or all multi-unit, uh, dwellings, and we have turned those down. This, in this case, is one lot out of these, uh, six. And so it makes it a little bit different. So that's the difference that I see in this. But I also understand, you know, uh, living in a, in a place that's more legacy lots that I'm in, you know, I think that I would prefer not to have a, uh, a twin home or a multi-unit dwelling there, uh, on my, in my general area. But then again, that's, that's me wanting to protect my own lot. I think that if, uh, I was building in there and knew that that was going to be there, then that would be my decision as to whether that would impact my decision or not. So I guess one of my questions to the applicant would be, if this is approved, is there a chance that you would go ahead with a single family dwelling on that lot rather than a twin home or a duplex?
Uh, no. Short answer is no.
If this is approved, then.
If this is approved.
You would go through with.
Yeah, and, and it, we, we will. I actually was just texting the landowner. I said, we need to get the architect going because those are not going to work for us. So the, it will be consistent, the twin home will be consistent with the architecture and style of the other single family homes in the neighborhood. The other thing I would like to mention is this is, and it was something we talked about in our last meetings and we've talked about with staff. This is not, this is a, this is a starter home neighborhood. This is not a, you know, you drive down the street and there's the sixty acre subdivision with larger nine thousand to fifteen thousand square foot lots. This is based on its location proximity to an elementary school. This is a starter home neighborhood, which is where I think, you know, I still think the nine thousand square foot lots are maybe too big for a starter home area. We're going to make it work. But with that said, I think the twin home actually adds a nice aspect to it where, um, it's a little bit more affordable than a larger home on a nine thousand square foot lot. So anyways, hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I think my only other, my only other concern for this is what's the parking going to be like when, in this little tiny, this little tiny area? But I guess you just make things work when you're living in a neighborhood. Probably not room for them to store their RVs and their boats and.
I know.
Have to talk to your neighbors before you have a party.
Well, if you have a starter home, can you afford RVs and boats?
Oh, you're right.
Not anymore.
That's a good comment. Good comment.
Any other discussion?
Sure. We've talked a ton about parking and traffic. We've paid our traffic engineer to do multiple different types of studies on what happens in and out. And there is absolutely zero difference between having eight lots in here or having six lots or five lot. There's just, there's, I think you said it's one car every fourteen minutes is the difference. Now, as far as parking goes, our layout won't change. We've been working with Byron and that layout, you could have one lot or five lots, that layout stays the exact same. Now going from, going to bigger lots, the nine thousand square foot lots, you're, you're going to have a deeper driveway, you're going to have a little, you can go a little wider driveway. So there's no reason people should be parking in the streets anyways unless you have four cars. Again, starter home, people probably aren't going to have four cars and an RV and a boat to park all over the place. So I, we have tried to address the parking concern, but in reality, the layout of the, of, I can't even read it, fifteen sixty east, the new, the new access off of four hundred north. And our new cul-de-sac, that layout stays the exact same, whether there's, it's this layout, there's eight lots or there's three lots, it's the exact same. And one other thing I did fail to mention is UDOT has approved this layout. So if there was any concern coming off four hundred north, um, we do have all those approvals from UDOT already to go.
Thank you. Very good. And I assume that, uh, all of these lots will have a driveway that is sufficient to park another couple of cars besides in the garages in the driveways. So the parking, uh, parking requirements are met. There just isn't as much as if it was in a regular street, I imagine. Any further discussion? In that case, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the proposed Zion's Landing two point O zone change with the complete neighborhood overlay be recommended for approval based on staff's findings and conditions.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
Okay, that passes. Now our, uh, oh, let's see, we do have a second part of that, don't we? Which is the approval of the preliminary pl- plat. We changed the zoning and approved that. D on our, uh, agenda tonight is the proposal that involves the approval of the preliminary plat for this, uh, for these residential lots. Do we need any explanation there? Any further explanation from staff? I think we've pretty well covered it.
I'm just, uh, often if we are, have a preliminary plat, we're also approving, um, elevations and we probably don't have final elevations. If we approve this, can we, i- is it too much to, to add a condition saying that you come back with, come back to talk to us about it? Or do we just say we're just trusting city staff to go over elevations and designs?
Yeah, I think it's so important that we get this right. So put another, another layer maybe scrutiny on it. Not the concern of, uh, getting it right. But I think it's appropriate if you want to see the building elevations before we issue a building permit.
Is your mic on?
I think it's appropriate that before we issue a building permit, we, um, present the elevations to the planning commission for your consideration. We could do that in a work session or in a relatively simple forum. And I can't imagine why that would be a concern. I don't want to speak for you, but we'd certainly be happy as staff to, to make that part of the process going forward. And of course, there's a chance, you know, again, not to speak for you or anything, but, um, we're always aware as staff that at any point in time, a project can change hands and that sort of a thing. So, um, and as much as it might carry some weight, if that's something that you want to see happen, I think it'd be helpful maybe to add a condition that before a building permit be issued for the twin home structure, the plans get reviewed by the planning commission or something to that effect.
I think that's appropriate. Okay. Any further discussion? Again, we have a, it's a public hearing, no public hearing here. Oh, because it is the sub, okay. All right, so I would entertain a motion.
Did you do that? Do you want me to do this one? We'll take turns since Mike's not going to vote for it.
I don't want to make that one.
Okay. All right.
Can you explain why there's no public hearing? I think they would.
Oh, Dave, do you want to explain why there's no public hearing for a preliminary plat?
Uh, it's just the nature of how projects are reviewed. I'm just curious to see what they have, but I got a, a short little announcement.
We'd need to have you speaking in the microphone.
Yeah.
Do it. Uh, I'll show you.
It directly affects my policy.
Yeah, certainly, yeah.
I'm not saying it won't look bad, it won't rain, but I'm just, just wanted you to follow the rules.
Let's have you come up to the microphone again. I mean, we can.
Let's take a minute. Chairman, you good? Byron, I think it'd be helpful if maybe you can zoom in on where the, the twin home would be. And then we can look at the, the proposed building elevation and that type of a thing. I appreciate the applicant being candid. What they've given us as a proposed building elevation for the twin home is something of a placeholder. That's why I think it's important to involve the planning commission on the, uh, review of maybe the real plans that we would see, but of course, there's the lots one A and one B. That's where the twin home structure would be.
Will you air, will you put your arrow over one A and one B? That's the twin home.
Blow those things up so we can really, I mean, and there's not a lot to it.
So this lot is where the twin home would be? Right there.
It's really not a lot of a layout, but one of the criteria, for example, that's in place with the, the zoning mechanism is that you can't have garage doors that are visible from the same street. So I think a lot of times we'd see a twin home located on a corner lot or something like that, where maybe from each street, it looks like the front of the structure. And that sort of a thing, in this case with those two lots, it's not a corner lot per se. I think we had the building elevation in the presentation. Yeah, or there. And again, uh, to some extent, this could change. Single family homes, and this is what the applicant gave us. And I, again, I don't want to speak for the applicant. I'll speak to what I understand, which is that this was provided as a demonstration of how they could build the, the twin home. There you can see, uh, the garage doors oriented, so they're not visible from the same street at least. That's a uniquely designed home, unique footprint for sure. And I think it does need to be modified even to fit within the building envelope on the lot. But the intent again is that it, it mirror, you know, the general look and feel of single family homes in the neighborhood. And by way of a layout or more detail, that's really all that we have. Again, for the most part, the project's just going to be single family lots, you know, but for that one.
So do you get that these two, okay, go, go back up? Oh, oh, bring it back? Yeah, that, oh, yeah, back to, just so that, okay, so now scroll up.
Yeah, I, I can, I understand where the front is and that, it just looks super.
These are what were, like, this is what his ideas were for what the homes would look like, the single family.
The single family, yeah, the one I'm concerned about is just the twin. I think those look great.
Right.
It's just that twin home looks Starship Enterprise.
Right, pretty basic.
If you look at it from the.
And that's not what they're proposing. That was a placeholder, they'll make the twin home consistent with the single family homes.
And that's not what they're proposing, that was a placeholder, they'll make the twin home consistent with the single family homes.
Okay, like I said, that's just my concern, it touches our lot, so that's why I'm really concerned about it. And like I said, I'd rather have you guys approve what's going through and make sure the steps are followed step by step and not kind of pushing it through. It's all, that was my concern, that's kinda what I was just, I'm not up to key with all this stuff, so if I'm out of line, sorry.
No, we appreciate your input.
And, and normally, normally, the elevations and what they're really gonna do when, is, is there when we approve a plat like this? And that's why we're asking for them to come back for us to approve the final, the elevations.
Okay, well, thank you for explaining that.
Thanks. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
All right, I move that the proposed Zion's Landing subdivision two point oh preliminary plat be recommended for approval based on the findings and subject to the conditions, adding the condition that before a building permit is issued that the designs are, designs and elevations are presented to the planning commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Just me.
Just one. Hey, that passes. All right. That brings us to E on our agenda tonight, which is the Canyon Court Urban Zone Change.
Thank you, this one's a two-part item as well, we have the zone change and then we have the plat, two separate motions as you've been doing. This is the property here on the screen at the intersection of four hundred north and Spanish Fork Parkway, just under fifteen acres in total size. Let's go to the next slide. This is the current zoning of the property, you can see, the request for the zoning is to change the small strip on the north so that it matches the remainder of the site, which is commercial. The general plan designation for the entire property is commercial, if we go to the next slide, I think that shows that. This is the, the general plan. And then go to the next slide. This is an aerial of the, the property looking east towards the mountains, let's go to the next slide. This is the preliminary plat that would accompany the zone change, and so once the property is entirely in the commercial C two zone, the applicant is then looking to develop seven commercial lots. Some of the key issues are that it is consistent, or excuse me, some of the key findings are that it is consistent with the general plan designation of commercial, that it would provide a new commercial center at a major intersection. And then some of the key issues to consider are the access and improvements, some of which are shown here on this plat. Any questions for staff?
Byron, what's the speed limit on the, on four hundred north there? I ask all the good questions.
Yeah, I don't...
And then we do have the...
It's just a fast road and I might, there's a roundabout, I love roundabouts, but a roundabout on such a fast road.
Forty-five, forty-five.
Forty-five?
Actually, I'd like to have that slowed down a bit. I think the roundabout will accomplish that without being as...
Yeah, you'll have to slow down to go through.
Yep. You'll have to have that slowed down quite a bit. And I agree, Shawna, that is, that is an area right there where the speed picks up quite a bit. And the light is just to the west of there, so, yep. For, yeah, before that, so this will probably involve the applicant as well. But I'd like to have a little bit of an explanation about the difference between what was proposed here a couple of years ago and what's proposed now.
Sort of put it bluntly, I guess, the main difference is, a couple of years ago, the applicant was looking with staff to develop a new zoning designation that would allow for a mix of uses on the property. And so, a lot of time and attention was put in by the applicant. If you recall, we had a number of meetings where he discussed elevations of the buildings, the types of residential units that might be on the property, how it would fit and not just be a standoff portion of the property. They did put a, quite a bit of time and, and attention to detail into that. My understanding is that there's, uh, strong market forces for commercial lots, particularly the big one, and so that, that's the shift in my understanding. We do have the applicant here, though, he can speak to that, if you'd like to invite him up.
Yeah, I would like to invite the applicant up to explain the changes and what we can look forward to on this property.
Probably the biggest one is the anchor.
State your name.
Oh, cor, sorry, Corey Anderson. The anchor wanted that center area, and so we accommodated that. And we were going to turn that lot, what is that, seven, and leave that residential. We were working with staff on that, but as we got...
This one?
Yeah. But as we got into it and look at the timing of creating a new zone, which would still happen to ha, have to happen here, and then just the economics of it. And we feel pretty confident that when that anchor gets in there, that that commercial lot will be able to, will be able to move that. And I think it'll be something that would be a, put to good use for a commercial, in this commercial area. And, yeah. Those are the big reasons.
Okay. Any other large changes, looks like the roads are basically in the same places, both on the south and the west, is that, is that right?
We, I think on the other one, we were on, on Parkway, there was an access more in the center of the property, we're moving it more to the north and coming along that side. But then the, you know, four hundred, that's, those are where those have to go, I don't really have much say of a say in that. But if you wanna get rid of the roundabouts, I'm, I'm all ears.
Because of the light, we can't.
Access is right here.
Yeah.
So if you have a big anchor, that'll be, that'll be behind?
The anchor, they're, what they're proposing right now, and they'll have to bring this to you guys, but they're, they're planning on facing that more westerly. So it'd be kind of, they'd face Parkway, is what they're looking, I mean, they haven't submitted anything, but that's what, that's how they're looking at doing it right now.
Oh, face this way instead of this way?
Interesting.
But I'll let them speak to that, that's...
Anything else that you'd like us to know about this proposal?
No, I think it'll be, I think it'll be a good addition to the city, I think this is, I think it'll be, we, you know, we've already got three of those that are kind of spoken for, and I think it'll be a, a good addition. I think it'll, me personally, I, I live in Mapleton, I go to Canyon Creek a lot, and I'm hoping I don't have to go down there anymore. That's my goal with this, so.
I think the population that's on the east side, northeast side of town will be well-served by this, this development. And I'm looking forward to seeing a nice development there.
I as well.
Any que, any other questions for the applicant?
Nope.
Any other discussion from the commissioners?
I feel like we've talked this development to death and I'm excited for it. So excited for the changes and the proposals, yeah, awesome.
Great. This again is a public hearing, and the first part of this is the zone change. And so, we'll all entertain a mo, motion to go into public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
Mike got it.
We, we have a, a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to come and discuss this zone change?
Hello, my name's Monty Bingham, I own the property to the west on the corner there. We've been there for twenty-five years and there's lots of changes that's gone on since we've been located there. Like Corey says, we have to go a long ways for milk, it'd be nice to have something a little bit closer. But I think with the appropriate taste to it in the development, it's a great addition to the city. There's lots of people that live out through there, it's a major corridor for Mapleton coming in through Spanish Fork and to have to go all the way downtown for certain services is kind of a lot more traffic on the roads. Now that Parkway's opened up, that's a major intersection, there's a lot of traffic going each direction. I don't think it's really as congested as it was before, but everybody has to go to and from to work. And I think having the right taste there for a bakery or, or market or something would be a good addition. At some point, we're looking at developing our area, and I think it would be great useful for, for residents in our area. And I've seen a lot of growth in that area over the last twenty-five years, and it's, it's changed. And a lot of people don't like change, but I think if it's taken care of in the right way, it's, it's good for the community and good for the, for the, for the town there. But, so, I'm excited to see it go forth. I shared the, the ditch that irrigates that area and it's hard to irrigate there anymore, we have so many homes around and, and the roads are a little tight through there, so I think having that change in there will help, help beautify things and clean up the ditches and to, to make it a nice, a nice environment. One thing with that, there's the corridor of the power line that's going through there. The city's done a great job putting in the parks there and the, and the pathway. Up to this point, walking down the street or, or riding your bike, you take your, your life in your own hands. And, and to have that corridor go through there, especially going over to the high school and to that area, it allows students to walk to school a lot more safely. And, and in the evening, people like to ride bikes or walk their dogs or whatever they may do. And I think having kind of a collective area on that intersection where it is so busy, it makes it a lot more safer for, for the community there, so, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Paul Dayton, I don't have any interest in the property other than a comment. I live about a mile south of there, and I often take Spanish Fork Parkway when I go into all the businesses in town 'cause Highway six kinda makes me sad because it's so crazy. That said, I think this'll be wonderful to have a development there. A mile is definitely walkable for me, I live just south of Highway six, just down Spanish Fork Parkway, near the Canyon Road. And I, I guess I would just say this, let's just make sure with everything we do, let's consider pedestrian walkways. The great thing with all this growth is, and, and particular in my area, we just, we got that Walmart a few years ago, the little small mart. I wasn't supportive of it, and now that it's there, I love it because, you know, we could be in the middle of making something to eat and I could just walk over there when I forgot some ingredient. And seeing, seeing something like this would be wonderful, especially for the kids who are in high school too, and, and all the houses that come around there. So, the other thing I'd just say is, it's nice to have a little bit of diversity in terms of where things are in town, not just all in one place, and this adds to that diversity. And then kind of a selfish note, as a citizen of Spanish Fork, we get tax revenue from Mapleton, so, let's help build things in Spanish Fork. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Michael Tutton, I live across from this property. My main concern is the roundabout, I'm with the builder on that. I don't, I, I don't know why we would create another big access onto four hundred, which is very busy with the school and the traffic that's trying to get into the city. I would, I would rather see a main access off of Parkway. The other thing is, you have that turn right there where the slant road is, I don't know, just a little bit further west from this property here. And that non-intersection, intersection is a constant problem because of the way it's, the way the shoulder of the road is there, the additional development that's going on in that area, and the fact that there's nothing there to, to help people turn left if they're coming east. And just putting another bottleneck into the middle of four hundred, all the people that are trying to get out of Mapleton, 'cause that's their main way to get out, just creates more, more traffic congestion. If you were to put the, the main entrance or the, you know, the way that, the, the developer's talking about orientating that building, if it's off Parkway, which I know that's a new road, that's a lot of traffic as well, but you can, you have a little bit more room there to, to manage that traffic on and off without disrupting again with another roundabout, I think it'll be this, the fifth roundabout, is that what we're up to on four hundred? So, anyways, that's my thought.
Thanks.
Dave's counting.
Yeah, okay, Tom Schulte again, I'm just curious about, could you put up the screen that shows the, the plots? Yes, thank you. Is there parking at all that would be considered on four hundred?
On the street?
Yeah. I hope not.
No.
Four hundred has a little shoulder. Likely it'll be striped, no, no parking, but that'd be a UDOT call, it's, it's a UDOT road and they control it, but... If it becomes an issue, they'll, they'll put no parking signs up.
Okay, because those are, um, those are very major, both of those roads are both major. And I can see where Mike is saying, give us access off of that one and keep all the access inside of the lot so that your parking is, is gonna be internal. Just curious about whether or not that was just considered.
Good comment. Anyone else? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Uh, I don't know that there are any questions to be answered there, I think the parking question was answered. Anything else that, that staff could help with or that we'd like to discuss?
Like I said before, I'm a, I'm a huge roundabout fan, there's a lot of people that I hear complaints about, but not a huge fan of a roundabout right there. I think that you could have a, um, you could have a turn lane going in and out of there, a, a good turn lane and, uh, like, have it be right in and right out. I guess the roundabout makes it so you can go in from either direction, but...
Yeah, we preliminary met with UDOT 'cause it, it is a UDOT ro, road and they control access on and off of it. Their traffic engineer and, and looking at the TIS is, it, it needs to be a controlled access to be a full access. So they looked at like a four-way stop signal, they're, they're just not realistic in that location with the tracks and, and the signal just to the west. So really, as we've looked at it with UDOT and their traffic engineers, it's, the roundabout's the best solution to work, even that...
It's the best solution because then it makes it so you can turn in from both going westbound and eastbound.
Yeah, safely, and it also will keep east and westbound traffic moving more than if, if you had a stop for like a stoplight or something for a cycle to go, so...
But if it was only a right in and right out, then you could not do a roundabout.
Yes, um, you could force it to be right in, right out. I believe the applicant wants a full access there, and it meets UDOT's requirements for a full access as long as there's a control there, so...
And because there won't be a, what do you call the, what do you, what's the official name for the suicide lane in the middle? There won't be one of those?
A median, or, no, there won't be.
Like a, what's the real name of that? Eternal lane? You know what I mean?
I kind of like the suicide.
I mean, yeah, but anyhow, okay.
I think from the standpoint of traffic control for this instance, although nobody likes their traffic impeded by anything, and roundabout is kind of that kind of a thing, but it does keep traffic moving rather than coming to an absolute stop in most cases. And in this case, the, the roads north and south, the road going into the development will have limited people going in, and the road that goes south from there will not be a main, main arterial road. So I think that the roundabout probably fits best there, at least to be the, the one, the one thing that we can use there that would be less interruptive to the traffic. So I, I, I like it there, but that's me. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
You guys want me to do one?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I'll recommend for approval the Canyon Court Urban Zoning Change, pending the findings and conditions.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and the second half of that is F, the Canyon Court Urban Subdivision. This is a proposal that includes the, includes the approval of the preliminary plat. We don't need any more discussion on that. I don't believe, we've pretty well discussed all of that. However, it is, this one is not because it's just the plat. So is there any other discussion amongst the commissioners, staff, public? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the proposed Canyon Court Urban Preliminary Plat be approved based on the findings and subject to the conditions.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes. Thank you very much for all of the people who have endured through the meeting. I really appreciate all of the people that are here tonight that participated and made their comments known. And I appreciate all of the help that we get from staff in resolving some of those things. So we will stand adjourned, I'll, I'll, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion that we adjourn.
Second?
Got, got, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.